Forty-three, meeting of Dixon County School Board. Members of the audience are reminded this is a meeting of the Dixon County School Board to conduct the business of the school district and the public. So, welcome to everyone, glad you're here. And Mr. Underwood, Joe Underwood, one of our school board members is joining us virtually pursuant to TCA forty-nine-two-two-oh-three-C-one. So, I want to make you all aware of that. If you all will, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. Hall?
I pledge allegiance to the state of the country.
All right. Board members, we have received our agenda. You all have hopefully received that and an opportunity to review it. And I would amend the, ask to amend the agenda to add on item four-E-F, the director's evaluation report. So, that'd be under the administration, under four-F, Director of Schools Evaluation Report. Any other additions? Mr. Hall, if you, Mr. Underwood, excuse me, if you would, turn your, the camera on for me. I want to make sure I see you, sir. Any other additions?
We do have a request for communications to provide information under six, item six.
Item six.
What's under item six, Art?
We have a request to address the board by Ms. Barbara Bennett.
Ms. Bennett here. Very good. Welcome, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move item six up to two-B, just to get her in here as fast as we can. If that would be okay.
So, items, the addition, you would like to add Ms. Bennett to, item seven-six to two-B?
Yes, sir, just to, just to get her in as fast as we can so that she doesn't have to sit here through the whole thing.
Why? You're welcome to stay with us, though.
Absolutely.
We'll, we can do that, see that there's an issue. Any other additions or amendments? We have a motion to approve seconded by Mr. Parker. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries? Next on the agenda, we have public comments on actionable items. And we have, first person is Angie Nichols. And Ms. Nichols, is she here?
I would ask.
Well.
You know, we're speaking on the same.
Well, we only have one person that has signed up, and that's you. That, that's the only person we had on the list, so. Okay. Well, are there any other, others that were going to speak? As I understand, we, we have a list, of course, it's by statute now. We had adopted a policy, but board members, are you?
Move to amend to let him speak.
Okay, I like the motion to amend to allow him to speak. Sir, what is your name?
Sam Williams.
Sam Williams. And sir, which item are you going to be speaking on?
Dress code.
All right, and are you for or against?
Against the new dress.
All right. Well, Ms. Nichols, you had signed up first, but. Okay, we'll let Mr. Williams go right ahead. Yes, sir, you have three minutes, sir. Yep, if you will take the podium, yes, sir.
My name is Sam Williams. I have a rising eighth grader and sixth grader at Burns Middle School this upcoming year. I'm here to request that the school board not allow the newly created dress code to be put in place. The following timeline lays out the process and how we got to this point. The day before school led out last year, my then-fifth grader and his classmates took part in the annual tour of Burns Middle School to prepare them for the graduation of sixth grade. During their tours, they informed of the dress code, which is the same dress code they had been in place all year. The day after school finished, which was the first day of summer, a post and apparently Facebook group alerted parents of a new dress code that had just been confirmed that morning. This was news to all the parents and students, especially since the rising sixth graders were just told that the dress code wasn't changing. An official Skyward email followed a few days later outlining the changes. As you can imagine, the reaction to the changes was not a positive one from students or parents. Then also, the dress code changes starts out with a statement, "As a result of stakeholder input from teachers, students, and parents, after gathering as many responses as possible, have not been able to find a parent or student that was included in this discussion. A rising eighth grader has been on student council for the last two years, and he confirmed that no discussion of a dress code was ever brought to the student council's attention. As a large group of parents came together to discuss the new changes, several concerns have surfaced as follows. First, we understand the biggest issue last year was, with the dress code, was with boys rolling up their shorts. And while there is no denying that this happened, the main offenders are now in ninth grade and not at the middle school. Second, the release, the release of the dress code mentions that students going to PE will be allowed to change for their PE period and then back to their school clothes once the class is over. Several concerns have come up with that potential process. The school employs three PE teachers who are all male. Are we expecting a PE teacher to monitor a bathroom where kids are changing? Are the kids going to use an athletic locker room to change? Do we trust students to not use phones in the locker room? And how will the girls' bathroom or locker room be monitored with only male PE teachers? In addition to the preference of wearing shorts and skirts in the warmer months, another concern is the price differences of requiring blue jeans and slacks instead of shorts or skirts or athletic pants. Many parents were struggling to afford clothing with the previous dress code. Requiring jeans and slacks will only increase that burden more. Certainly, there are stores that offer discounted rates of clothing, but these newer required items are constantly more expensive than the previous dress code options, and as you can imagine, clothes are constantly being replaced due to the growth of rate of kids in middle school. After much discussion amongst the parents, we decided to reach out to many of you on the school board to express our frustration with this decision. And I first want to thank each of you for your timely responses. It's clear that each of you care about the opinions of the parents in the district. In addition, and maybe even more importantly than all the reasons listed above, through these school board responses, we have learned that the new dress code changes did not go through the proper protocols that have been put in place to avoid these abrupt decisions, which require dress code changes to be approved in the spring of the previous school year. In the Board of Education Policy, under the Dress Code section listed as descriptor code six-point-three-one-oh, the policy specifically say, says that when a principal desires to change a dress code for the school, quote, "The principal shall solicit input from staff, parents, and students and submit such a proposal to the board in the spring prior to the implementation of such program for the following academic year," end quote.
Time.
Thanks, sir.
Yep.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, move the letting finish.
I'm sorry?
I would like the letting finishes comment.
Okay. I have a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We do not believe that the students and parents were asked for input and that the dress, new code, the new dress code is put in place after the school year was over, not during the spring. With these items I mentioned, I'd ask the board to not allow the new dress code to be enforced and to set in place the previous dress code for this year. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Nichols?
Much to my children's chagrin, they are. Items one and two, if you guys would stand for a second. They are so happy about that. What Adam and Sarah are wearing would not be allowed in the next year's dress codes. Y'all can sit down, thank you. Neither would my outfit, by the way. My name is Angie Nichols, I have twins at Burns Middle. And let me start by saying I personally like to dress modestly, and I do the same for my children. But I am against the dress code restrictions because, for that very reason, I find it too restrictive. There is a reason that leggings and sports shorts are popular choices for kids. It's because of elastic. Kids grow fast, especially at the adolescent stage. Anything with an elastic or drawstring waist has a little room for growth, which means a little more time before having to replace them. In the case of girls, leggings are far more than a fashion statement. They allow for growth and accommodate a variety of body types. In the case of my daughter, we will have to accommodate her long legs and small waist with jeans and slacks, which will now be the only options with the exception of long skirts. We will have to buy pants with built-in elastic expanders in order to pull the waist in. These pants are dramatically more expensive and rarely available at Walmart. When leggings are allowed this year, were allowed this year, the top to be used as, had to be as long as a skirt or a dress, which was knee-length. However, a more popular top to wear with leggings over the past several years is called a tunic top. And tunics are not meant to be knee-length, they are meant to be thigh-length. It is an article of clothing that's been around for centuries. For boys, we will have much the same problem. Jeans and slacks with elastic expanders in the waist will be necessary, and again, more expensive. In addition, such pants are not amenable to participation in PE. And I also have heard about dressing out for PE, but I anticipate huge problems with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students all sharing locker rooms for a quick change during school. Can you imagine how intimidating that will be for a sixth grader? To my knowledge, there are no female PE teachers at Burns Middle to supervise the girls' locker room. I assume these higher, tighter restrictions were precipitated by many violations this last year. However, I contend if the dress code were more in line with comfort for growing bodies in a hot Tennessee summer, there might be fewer violations. I fully support the administration and the district in finding a consistent solution that will allow administrators.
We'll let her finish, though.
It's just one sentence. That will allow the administrators to spend less time on these issues, but keep the, but keep the students decently attired in a fashion that they can enjoy and support. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. And that concludes our public comments. We'll move on to the next item, which is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Board members should have received that. Any proposed changes or amendments?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Parker, is there a second? Second by Mr. Chadwick, any further discussion? If you would, all these by roll call vote, if you will.
Mr. Vandervert?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All aye.
Motion carries, next we have under recognitions, staff recognitions, Dr. Weeks, I'm chief A.
Board members, I'm just going to ask our elementary education director, Ms. Ernestine Adams, if she would come forward. Ms. Adams, as do most of our staff, represent our district in so many ways, and they, they take the place and work hard outside of the district office. They commit their time and their energies to the entire county, not just the school system. And recently, the Clement Railroad Hotel Museum recognized Ms. Adams as the twenty-twenty-three Trailblazer Award winner. And so, several of us were there for that dinner, and Ms. Adams did an excellent job of sharing her heart for boys and girls, but her heart for Dixon County schools. And we're very proud of Ms. Adams and the work she has done, and are thankful to the Clement Railroad Museum for recognizing her for this honor. And I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that as well. Ms. Adams, you do a great job, and we're proud of you.
Ms. Adams, so well deserved, and thank you for your service to our county. Board members, any comments? Anyone else? Hearing none, any other recognitions, Dr. Weeks?
Not at this time.
All right. We'll move on to the recognitions to B, Ms. Barbara Bennett. Ms. Bennett?
I'm going to read this, okay? At the last meeting, we were told that we were losing a hundred and twenty-three teachers, and that no one knows why. That is being, what is being done to find the reason why these teachers are leaving and to address their issues. We would like for the answers to be brought back to this meeting as an agenda item to be addressed officially in the next meeting, if that's possible.
Thank you, thank you for your request. Board members, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is under three-A, curriculum instruction, Dr. Weeks.
Board members, Ms. Adams and Dr. Popner, our curriculum supervisors are going to provide us with an update of items from summer school and summer programming. And so, we look forward to their reports.
Dr. Weeks. We had summer camp, June the fifth through the thirtieth, for rising kindergarten through fifth grade. We had four-hundred-and-seventy-five students to come. Over a hundred staff. The sites were White Bluff, Van Lier, and Oakmont. And those sites were selected because we were able to offer free meals to the students just because of the poverty rate at those schools. So, the students received one hour of reading, math, intervention, and then an extracurricular. And if you remember, in January, I told you we were working with the community. So, we had two yoga teachers. We had an art teacher who did special projects with the students. We had the Quest Center come and work with the fifth graders. And they got some beginning lessons on the keyboard and the guitar. And we also had the UT Extension Office with us. The students really enjoyed that. The last two days of camp, they were optional for students who needed to come and make sure they had ninety percent attendance. And many of the fourth graders did not have to come, but they came because they enjoyed the music lessons so much. So, the students had a pre-test and a post-test. Over ninety-five percent of them showed growth. In talking, in surveying the parents, we only had thirty-four parents who responded, but ninety-seven percent of them said that they did see academic growth in their children. And eighty percent of them stated that they would send their children next summer. Fifteen percent said maybe. In regard to the rising fourth graders, that we, that some of them had to come. So, forty-six of them had to come to meet the promotion criteria to go into fourth grade. But we had a total of ninety-four. So, about fifty of them did not have to come, but their parents wanted them to come. All of them met the criteria, they came ninety percent of the time, they took the pre and the post-test. So, all of the third graders are being promoted to fourth grade, so that none of them are being held back because of the law. There is one I learned about today who's part of the virtual program. I'm going to have to check with, with his parents to see what, what all that he did. But other than that, there was no retention because of the law. And I had told you in January, we were going to take care of the students, and that's what we did. Dr. Weeks did approve money for us to take the fourth graders to the movies and popcorn and coke, because those poor children, they have been assessed since third grade, and we thought they deserved something special. And I will say that the parents in the community, they have really been very respectful in understanding that we were implementing, implementing a law that was not our idea to hold students back because they didn't score a particular score on one test. Any questions?
Questions? Yes, sir, right ahead, Mr. Chairman.
You've done a fabulous job handling that.
Thank you.
Put a lot of minds these across the county. That law gained a lot of attention, a lot of hilarity to it. We watch what you dare to run. I have no clue how to do it, but you're busy.
It's my pleasure, thank you.
And you, you said you might, you were going to take care of them, and you did.
Absolutely.
And that was not easy to do, implementation-wise, a lot of frustration. Thank you.
As my husband said, you did it one way or another.
Thank you.
So, we had for our middle school summer learning was rising sixth graders through rising ninth graders, and they, that learning took place at Dixon Middle School and also at Dixon County High School. So, at Dixon Middle School, the students had their hour and a half of ELA, an hour and a half of math. And much of the ELA that they did was based on science and social studies topics. And those were approved curriculum from the state, or they could use the approved curriculum from the state for summer learning, so they got to choose from those two curriculums. They also had an intervention time. But then, we decided to make a change. Last year, we had activity time for those students. But we know that some of our students who go to summer learning, they don't have a passion for school. And so, I really wanted them to see the relevancy of school and what was coming down the pipe for them. So, in the afternoons, they went to, rode the bus and went to Dixon County High School, and they got to do CTE exploration. And I appreciate Mr. LaCount making that happen in his CT teachers. We had CT teachers from both Dixon County High School and Creekwood there. The first week, they had ag science, and they, the fan favorite was the animal, the Ag Barn. They got to learn how to groom an animal with, using Dolly, the Dixon County High School farm dog. They learned how to lead large animals. The second week, they had digital arts and AV and nutrition and dietetics. So, there was some cooking going on and some videos were being made. Week three was health science. They learned about health careers, not just being a doctor or nurse, and they learned how to take vitals and that type of thing. And the last week was criminal justice. And so, they did some fingerprinting and talked about crime scenes and forensics. So, it, it was a big success. And so, we, we believe that we reached our goal. So, the students had some academic growth, but they also got to see what was waiting for them at the high school and why it's very important to put in the work, so you get to go to the Hill or Creekwood High School and take part in those CTE classes.
Questions? Thank you all for making that a success for the summer. And, and quite frankly, I remember, I guess it was in May, that there was circulated about a five-page list of teachers that committed themselves to over the summer, if you recall. So, thank them as well, without their help and cooperation and willingness to do that, it made a huge difference, so thank you all, so. Other comments by board members, hearing none? We'll move on to three-B, the hands, monthly reports, Dr. Weeks.
Board members in your packets, on page six, you'll see item three-B-one. And this is just pre-closing of our books, so we do still have several items that'll, that'll go in and it's be our final expenditure in our final revenues report. But this is through June thirty. You'll see our revenues for the year ended up at seventy-six-point-seven million. Our expenditures, seventy-six-point-three million. Property tax revenues came in at a hundred-and-eleven percent of budget. Sales tax revenues came in at a hundred-and-twenty-seven percent of budget. So, we're very blessed with those numbers. You'll see our final, well, again, pre-final expenditures on our utilities, two million dollars, diesel fuel, half million dollars, and gasoline, eighty-one thousand. You'll see those comparisons next to previous year. Behind there, you'll see the summary documents on Fund One Forty-One. Again, these are going to be, these are going to be close to closing numbers, but we do still have some revenues to report and maybe a few expenditures to record. So, you see your One Forty-One Fund Summary. Our One Forty-Two, our Federal Projects Fund, begins on page twelve, and you'll see that. We received thirty-five-point-three million dollars from the federal government. And again, you'll see that those are in-and-out dollars, those come to, through mainly Dr. Collins' office, and she's responsible for budgeting that through special ed, through CTE programming. So, that's pages twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. There was skill nutrition on page fifteen, Cafeteria Fund One Forty-Three. You'll see, again, just prior to closing, twelve-point-six million dollars in and twelve-point-six million dollars accounted for. And those are, those are there for your documentation. If you have questions, Mr. Rogers is here, we'd be glad to answer questions for you.
Board members, questions about the monthly report of June?
Yes, sir, it's right on the Fund One Forty-Two. The twenty-three million dollar revenues, that Esther money combined, that's our money.
Oh, yeah, Esther money is involved in that. It is our regular title funds as well as any new Esther dollars that is all in the federal funds, yeah.
Mr. Chadwick, on One Forty-Three. Twenty-one, five-thirty, due to State of Tennessee, William James Middle.
The. That William James Middle being attached to that, they, in, in the school nutrition funds, they call center all of their expenditures. And so, that's just kind of a, the, the final of the call center. It doesn't mean that it ties directly to William James Middle School because the due to State of Tennessee is our unemployment tax. And so, it, it does not necessarily just be, just tied to William James Middle. It would be all of the schools that would be involved in that.
Is, is June the end of the fiscal year?
Yes, sir.
It starts October July first.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And we do have some things that need to be closed into this that are, you know, some payables, some receivables that, you know, due to the end of the year, so we have until August thirty-first to finally close the books, get those prepared for audit. So, these are going to be really close.
Our nutrition's prepared for audit.
Nutrition is in good shape this year, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, you have to true the budget up to match what it actually ended up for audit or what it is, so you'll, we'll have one more amendment to get them to the.
No, ma'am, we do not have to do that because once the, whenever the audit is completed, they let it go whichever way that it needs.
You don't have to true it up.
No, ma'am, no, thank you.
Sir, any questions?
No.
Okay, sir. Other questions by board member? All right.
Let me take act on this.
Yes, sir, there's a motion to approve the monthly report.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Parker to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brogdon, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Vandervert?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood? Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All aye.
Motion carries, next on the agenda, under three-E-two, annual report acknowledgement, Dr. Weeks.
Board members. Let's, let's hit three-E-one, if you don't mind, three-E-one is our human resources report for the month.
Yes.
And so, on page seventeen, you'll see the monthly reports, or to me, the monthly report that comes from Ms. Hall's office. You'll see since our last report, we've had two more retirements. You see a handful of resignations. Three or four people have already applied for a leave of absence for the start of the new school year. And then, you'll see the work of the HR department. And then you'll see the work of the HR department and principals and other department heads as they've hired, transferred and reassigned other individuals on pages seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. So again, we uh, uh, we are as prepared for school as we possibly can be. Uh, we are still as you would expect. We need some math teachers. We need some special education teachers and we need some ELL support teachers along with other support staff. I think we are in good enough shape. Uh, it's it's not where we want to be, but I think principals have been working with their departmental supervisors and us to to have schools open. Uh, we are, we're using some electronic learning to help us get through some difficult spots. Uh, but our teachers are really stepping up to help as well. And so principals are are um, in as good a shape as they can be at this point in time. Uh, we do still have a couple of folks, Ms. Hall tells me, that are trying to make some decisions about positions. So we may, may have a couple more field tomorrow, uh, that will help us a great deal. Uh, we've looked, the people teacher ratio is something that we look at as we talk about human resources as well. And so our people teacher ratios are in good shape and we're prepared to start school and be in full compliance with that. Uh, again, we'd like to thank, uh, we had our new employee orientation a week ago and uh, that was very successful. We had eighty five new employees come to us. And again, when we say new employees, um, those are coming from all over. So some of them right here from Dixon County, uh, many graduates and coming back to us. But we have them from uh, all over middle Tennessee and farther. So we, we had a nice day of training for them and orientation. So each of our department heads had opportunity to uh, speak to them and tell them how we would support them in their classrooms or in their positions that they have upcoming.
For members, questions about the monthly report for human resources? Any questions? I would say, uh, we have a retirement, Ms. Draper who had served the county, it looks like for forty one years. I think that deserves a recognition, a paper for her service and all those that are retiring. So. Other comments or questions? All right, we'll move on to the next agenda item, three E two, now annual report acknowledged.
Members in your packets on pages twenty, twenty one and twenty two. Uh, you will see a report that Ms. Hall uh, works on every day. So this is already, uh, this started on June of two thousand twenty two and runs through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty three. So uh, you see by month, uh, the number of employees who have retired or were non renewed. Uh, and then from their exit surveys, uh, they indicated what their, what their reason for leaving the district was. So uh, as of last year and Mr. Andrew, what you mentioned, we had thirty one retirees. And so uh, we congratulate all those employees that have done that. And so we thank them for their work. Uh, but you'll also see the number of individuals that based upon their classification, uh, they indicated what their, what their choice was for leaving the position that they had. You also see on the number of the right side, the number of classified employees that it was and the number of certified employees that was. And so uh, you'll see uh, those numbers there. Second page of that document uh, is a pie chart that Ms. Hobbs prepared for us. And again, the percentage of student, uh, sorry, percentage of staff that leave and what months they leave in. And uh, again, it's, it's not much of a surprise that May and August are the two months that uh, people make those announcements. In May, we have a lot of people telling us they're retiring and and uh, thankful for their service. Uh, in August, we have a lot of people that make the decision at the last, last minute to uh, change, change their plans. Uh, we also have some people that we employ and then they during August uh, decide that that was not what they wanted to do. And then finally, you'll see a summary sheet on page twenty two. And again, this uh, this is an annual report, Ms. Hall is here and she would be able to answer any questions if you have those questions.
For members, questions about the annual report, uh, during district staff changes? We've all filed a report and we've had time to review it. Questions? We're looking to go ahead and, and just acknowledgement.
That's. Sure.
No. Does the board want to take action on acknowledgements? We have a motion by Mr. Haley to acknowledge the uh, staff, district staff changes. Your second?
Second on the motion.
Second by Mr. Parker. Any further discussion on the motion?
Just thank the staff for putting that together for us and I appreciate that.
No other questions, comments? We will roll call vote.
Mr. Vandiver?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All on.
Motion carries next under three G, transportation. Uh, one item one approved surplus items, Dr. Weeks.
For members from our transportation department, uh, you'll see a request from Ms. Garden to place the following items. But it's a miscellaneous list of items, actually, uh, thinks that she has declared surplus and no longer needed uh, at the transportation office. So you'll see various parts, filters, belts, calenderone, uh, one largest item that you see is a bed cover from a Chevrolet fifteen hundred miscellaneous tires and other items. Uh, we have no need for these items. We would declare these surplus and I requested you declare these surplus and we placed them in auction uh, to be sold.
Discussion on the request for approval of surplus items.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brogdon. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Vandiver?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All on.
Motion carries next under three G two, request for approval of purchase buses.
For members, uh, you see a request from the transportation department to purchase our buses for the twenty three, twenty four school year. Uh, you will see in her second sentence, it's taking between twelve and eighteen months for us to receive a bus. So we are just now receiving some of the buses that we purchased last year. Uh, it's taking manufacturers that long to get them uh, built and prepared for us. Uh, so as you know, these are the new replacement buses, which, which will be required to take the old buses offline. Uh, you will see uh, that um, buses have gone up considerably. And you will see the eighty four passenger bus this year is just shy of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Actual quote price, one fifty nine, nine sixty eight. And we're budgeted for five of those buses this year, so seven ninety nine, eight forty. Uh, these are bluebird buses purchased from a source well contract. And so you see a letter on page twenty five from Southwell and from Central State, who is a regular supplier of our buses, uh, the items that they would provide for us. Uh, this is in our regular budget and would recommend approval for that.
For members, questions, comments on the requests? We will purchase buses.
All of them eighty five, oh, eighty four passenger?
Yes.
All of them diesel engine?
Yes.
All of them Allison transmission?
Yes, I would imagine. Ms. Garten?
Yes. I would like to, in the future, I think that we went long enough. And I'm not, I think it's important to stay with the product that we like. And if it's the product that we like, we definitely stay with it. But I think in the future, next year, I want to ask that we, we do uh, quote these out just to keep the honest people honest and make sure that if we, we go with the international and Thomas and everybody, just, just make sure that we're, we're staying in our price range. Cause I think at some point that they're going to realize that we're, we're tied to them and they're just going to do whatever they want. So I'd like to see these quoted out, but for this year, as long as they're eighty four passenger, the buses that we want with diesel engines, Allison transmissions, I'll move to approve.
A motion to approve by Mr. Parker is, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chadwick. Any further discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Haley?
The line item budget, is there enough money there to cover that amount?
Uh, we do have some, we have some money from Ester that was dedicated to these. So between those two items, between Ester dollars and between the budgeted items, seventy two, one seventy, we will have fun.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I guess go over the days of ninety five to a hundred and ten thousand buses. And Mr. Parker, to your comment, I, I, this is just my understanding, it could have changed. But I know we had Thomas buses and I think it was a matter of exchanging of parts and issues like that. So we kind of started going with the one, and of course they're good buses, so.
And I love the fact that they stay with all the same. I just want to keep the honest people honest and not uh, make sure we're bidding them out correctly to, to make sure that Bluebird, Central State's not just going to run their price up on us just because they know that's what we're going to get.
Hey, and I think that's, that's one of the benefits of buying from a buy board is because those, those are bid to the, the buy board, whether it's source well, whether it's tips, whether it's, whether it's the buy board price. Now, it is bid at the state level and still here.
Okay.
But, but it's not just for us, right? So, so they are going through the bid process. I want to make sure that's clear. And again, I, I don't have a problem doing the other if you, you know, if we want to do that because we could always come back to uh, a purchase off of a contract such as this.
Thank you for that.
Other comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Vandiver?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All on.
Motion carries under three G three, annual report acknowledgements.
For members, uh, this is another report that we have for the end of the year. And again, we uh, this is one of the more enjoyable reports to read because it, it always amazes me uh, how many students are transported every year, how far those students are transported. And so it would draw your way, draw your eyes to about two thirds of the way down the page, total regular route miles for the year. So these are regular routes that we've driven five thousand six hundred and twenty miles per day. So that totals a million and eleven thousand miles uh, that our regular routes are running. And then when you see field trips and academic trips and things like that, there were nine hundred and forty eight of those trips for a total of seventy five thousand miles. Uh, and then we, we heard reports from summer school. And again, uh, summer school transportation is very important. We are thankful to the state of Tennessee that's provided the dollars for summer camp transportation. So you see that uh, thirty one thousand miles of that uh, were just dedicated to summer school mileage. Um, Ms. Garten has calculated trivial knowledge for us there. Uh, total of all of our miles, we could have driven four and a half times to the moon. Or we could have driven forty six times around the entire world. So one million, one hundred, um, that number is not right. So uh, but over a million, one point one million miles, uh, somewhere in there around the world, forty six times.
Not a lot of sickle.
A lot of that. Uh, regular buses, uh, you'll see that we transported five thousand five hundred students on regular buses on a daily basis for a hundred and one special needs students. Uh, we do transport students to the school for the blind in Nashville and Genesis Center, which is a special needs program. Uh, we've transported some homeless students to and from. And so five thousand six hundred of our roughly eight thousand students are transported on our school buses. So again, that's uh, shows the importance of that and doing. Page two, uh, this is, out of all those trivial facts, I'm most proud of, uh, topping number one on that page, student injuries is here, zero. And so again, that's not saying we didn't maybe have somebody cut their finger or something like that, you know, on something on the bus. But no accidents involving any student injuries. Uh, occasionally we did have some property damage. We occasionally hit mailboxes or gates or things like that. We had eighteen accidents this year. And then you'll see some other uh, information there. We had uh, seven buses that were retired and, and you know that process. Uh, just some other information about uh, about our buses. And just uh, to help you again, frame this in terms of budgets, because we do always come back to our budgets. Uh, our diesel costs this year averaged three dollars and forty nine cents per purchase. Uh, and our gas averaged two fifty. And overall, we purchased a hundred and fifty two thousand gallons of diesel. So again, uh, this report goes to the state and here, I guess we could acknowledge that as well. And uh, we're proud of Ms. Garten, Transportation Office for all the work that they put in and the, uh, but those bus drivers, those are the ones that pick up our students in the morning. Uh, they're our first contact with students and our motto is every student, every day. And those bus drivers understand, uh, that's their role is to welcome and greet those students on the mornings as they get on our buses. Same thing at the end of the day, they're the last ones to see them as they go home and we wish them a good night. So thank you, Ms. Garten.
Little members, questions about the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three annual report acknowledgement transportation? Comments? All right, here it is, your motion to acknowledge the report. We have a motion by Mr. Haley, second by Mr. Chadwick. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Garten.
Thank you, Ms. Garten, and all the drivers and what they do. So. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Vandiver?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yep.
All on.
Motion carries next under three H, uh, student services. We have uh, three H one, special permissions.
For members, we uh, do have one request for travel, uh, September one through three. Dixon County High School's cross country team will be traveling to Cincinnati, Ohio uh, to uh, an athletic competition, members of the cross country team. And you'll see the cost explanations of that trip signed by the principal and I would recommend approving.
For members, we have this request, uh, questions, comments?
Cross country being both boys and girls, we have both male and female monitors going.
Yes.
Other questions or comments? Your motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Parker is a second, second by Ms. Brogdon. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Vandiver?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All on.
Motion carries next under item four A, administration, uh, dress code, Burns Middle School. And I think Dr. Duke is here to address this.
Mr. Trump, can I get a little comment, please?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I just, I was just calling it. It seemed to me some emails that I received, I think there was some regarding about why we're here. And I, I wanted to make sure that, you know, the board knows when I sent the email out, but people that are here and the uh, the public. I asked this to be on the agenda and that's why I wanted to comment before we started. My request on the agenda was to address policy that regards this issue, not the dress code. So I know there's been a lot of discussion and talk about, I want you to revise what you, on the dress code, re look at it. My request was to address the policy about the dress code. So I'll make that clear.
Yes, sir. Any other board comments with this? Hearing none. Dr. Weeks, Dr. Weeks, Dr. Duke is here for.
I'm here tonight to talk about the dress code at Burns Middle School, uh, pursuant to policy. Uh, I had a team of our, uh, at our school look at what we needed to do different as we started this next school year. Uh, these meetings occurred at the end of April and at the beginning of May. One large concern that we had at the time, uh, was the amount of time and effort expended by faculty and staff on dress code issues at Burns Middle School. Uh, my faculty dealt with dress code issues daily. Uh, we averaged dealing with violations and calls to parents. Every other day at the school, we had roughly eighty reported violations of dress code during the course of the school year. This does not include or does not account for students uh, rolling up and unrolling the bottoms, uh, their bottoms in the dress code. Um, I know personally, as I met students in the morning before school start, I sent a lot of them to the front office to get changed before school started, that we did not dress code. Um, this happens daily. Uh, we've had discussions with them as groups in the cafeteria classrooms and various other places to try to get our student body to follow the corrections. In discussing uh, dress code violations with the faculty and staff at our recent in service, uh, I asked the faculty to raise their hand. They sent everybody up. It was violated dress code. There were no hands raised. Uh, my entire uh, faculty said that they had multiple violations, uh, that weren't sent for discipline. They addressed them in the classroom because of the times, uh, the time that they devoted for the issue. The remark made by the faculty in response uh, to why they didn't refer each student in violation of the, to the office was uh, number one, that it is all we would be doing. Uh, number two, that they wouldn't, the kids wouldn't be in my class. Those are the two answers that I got. Uh, as we would do with any issue at school, we consider solutions to the problems. If we're having problems with two items, yoga pants and shorts, the simple answer is to take them out. After the recommendations were made or reviewed, uh, what needed to be done, it sent the information out to all of our students and parents at this most of the summer. Here the, here's the issue at school, dress code, uh, discipline is extremely time consuming. My experience, the girls do not wear shorts because they cannot find shorts for, uh, long enough as we go to the knee. Um, the boys are able to purchase knee length shorts and wear them. However, when they get to school, the boys roll their shorts up past their knees. Uh, then it is a constant fight with the parents, uh, because they say the shorts are knee length. Um, the major area was the yoga pants the girls would wear. Uh, problems arise with a quick glance if they are standing in the hallway or other places because they have learned to sometimes wrap what they have open in their hands. So we can't see what's going on, what they have on. Um, they've also got pretty accustomed to walking behind people and saying, so that they can go around teachers and staff that will be addressing those issues. Um, it's kind of like wearing a baseball cap, um, in the building. Uh, I like to wear it. I like to wear them. I wear them all the time outside. Um, but we did not allow them in the building. The reason is the students have it off when they walk by me. And it's a habit. They put it back on their head as they get around. It's just a habit. Okay? Um, so we've taken, we just took the baseball hats out. Um, they were sitting here dealing, because of the baseball hat, they throw it on afterwards. They were sitting here having to deal with an issue. The shorts and yoga pants issue are gone, uh, with the revisions that we made this spring. The issues we face here at Barnes Middle School, uh, we have students that push the dress code, students start talking about what other students are wearing, where it starts. Social media posts are made and students are upset over may, being made fun of for the attire that they wear. Uh, we've had to deal with the aftermath. So I've, I've had my fair share of social media blasting this summer, but I can handle it. The students, when they were put in the spot, struggle. So now the school is having to address many more issues. The most said that I hear most often from people is, well, they did it to themselves. Probably possibly, but most likely there are a lot of other issues that involved. Regardless, we are here, we are as a school having to address the issue, uh, that we can prevent the changes to the dress code. Uh, then we're here. If I was talking about an issue or having in a classroom and took action on it, would we be here? It's common sense that if, uh, I have an issue with people wearing tails to school, uh, I address it, add no tail policy to the dress code and it would be handled. Uh, additionally, I would address the problem with the students involved. When there are no changes, more students start doing it, the issue continues. So we need to change, uh, we would need to change in how we are going about, uh, adding it to the dress code. I would hope that every change of the rules at the school, we do not need to address those issues at board meetings. In my humble opinion, the board has more important things to do than dress code. When I look at how the policy is written, uh, that when the school goes above and beyond these dress guidelines, they need to bring this to the board in the spring. First of all, there are no guidelines stated that these two pieces of clothing are even in the dress code policy to begin with. So I'm not sure how to decide what changes are, uh, above and beyond. Uh, we, we, uh, will we be here if we're taking out tails from the dress code? You know, when I hear above and beyond, I think of taking a certain colored, colored shirt, khaki pants. Um, is what I see would be something that I would consider above and beyond what we have as a dress code. By the way, I've heard several parents, uh, say they would appreciate a stricter dress code with collared shirts and dress pants. Um, in this case, the issue can be addressed by simply taking the two pieces of clothing that we currently have, uh, in a dress code out that are causing problems. This is not a punishment for me. Um, I don't, I hope that that's not seen as a punishment. It's more than an answer to a problem we've had at, to address at Burns Middle School. Uh, I wish that everyone would come in and do what they've been asked to do. But with a particular issues, they're not. Uh, even after class disruptions, most, uh, multiple phone calls, ISS visits, time wasted, uh, out of class and chats. Uh, it is my position that my faculty and I have compelled the school, uh, complied with the school policy of making these changes. I feel as though the policy was written to allow the principals and the school to address issues that arise. And not to have to run to the board every time to, that they need or we need to add or tweak school rules, uh, to help make students more successful. Now, if y'all have any questions or?
What members questions for you, sir?
Yes, sir. I won't feel like I'm at lack of words because I've got so many words that I just try to figure out which ones I want to say first.
Yes.
Um, uh, my email blowed up as I'm sure the other board members did, as, as we were all tagging a lot of the same emails. Uh, I personally talked to four middle school teachers at Burns Middle School. And I want to talk a little bit about the, uh, the elephant that's in the room right now that nobody wants to talk about. And I want to talk about what the teachers told me. I won't expose the teachers, so nobody waste your time and ask me. But they did, the four teachers that I talked to that's in that school told me that a lot of the, they were, they were for the, they were for the policy change, by the way. They were for the policy change because they didn't have to deal with the issue anymore. But the issue that they told me was the boys had nothing to do with girls. Nobody has told me nothing about girls. It's all boys. And the boys roll their pants up and expose theirself. Have you heard that?
I haven't heard the exposing part, but I know there's some folks.
Told me, every teacher I talked to, four of them, all women, I won't tell you who they are, but they told me that the boys are literally exposing theirself to the girls and has made it a game to see how they can get away with it. Now, that issue is a bad issue and that issue needs to be fixed with our SRO officers. The good people of Dixon County have elected a great, in my opinion, juvenile court judge who ran his campaign by discipline. And if that's what's happening and that's the reason for this change, those kids need to go see Mr. Creasy. After they see our SRO officer, after they move that up. Now, when we're going and making a change like this, as you said, you're talking about taking, taking tails away would be a big deal. Well, you're taking a whole garment away because you're taking shorts away. Same thing as taking tails away. Um, I, I do think that that is a a big garment to take away at one time. Um, policy, I don't think was followed on that. Uh, I will support policy because as the board implies a policy, whether it's this board, previous boards or whatever, procedure one hundred percent rolls off of the director. And he can roll that procedure down to his administration to his principals as he feels the need to. But that procedure has to follow the policy that's put in place by the board or there's no reason for us to be here right now. So. Thank you.
Well, there's other questions of Dr. Duke?
I had two emails from teachers, one for and one against. Um, the one a-against the change says this has been going on since twenty nineteen, a problem.
We've been addressing it for quite some time. Yes, sir.
What are the, what are the consequences? What like, what the boys are doing?
If we heard that right there, it would be a lot, a lot more, but I had not like personally, I don't know, you know, exposing themselves. I know they're getting close, but I don't get the, hey, their, their shorts are rolled up. Well, by the time they're sitting down to the office, they're unrolled magically and they're at their knee. So that, but to answer your question, the first one is a warning they're allowed to change. Uh, the second one, uh, they are putting ISS and ISS continues to trickle up until they either change, quit, quit coming that way or uh, eventually we'd end up with suspensions. Uh, and at a certain point, I guess that would become a willful and persistent violation of school rules.
You talk to other middle school principals?
Have I? Yes, sir. I've talked to Dixon County High School as well.
They having the same problem?
Um, shorts are getting shorter. Um, you know, you walk out right now, um, it reminds me a lot of Magnum P I, Thomas Magnum, uh, you know, everybody's wearing the short shorts. Uh, I know it's a trend. Um, but the boys themselves are making it, they're exaggerating a little more, uh, by rolling up their shorts, which is another trend that's going on right now. So I think, you know, I, I've been around long enough to know that we used to have to get on the kids for sagging. That's not an issue anymore. But the rolling the pants up is, so we're going the other way now.
Well, I know in high school I went through it, but slip the belt down as far as, you know, they could get halfway between their knee.
Yes. Um, yes, sir. Um, it's a hard battle and I like, and I understand this, uh, the hard battle is trying to, they're, they get pretty accustomed to seeing me walk down the hall. Again, they're hiding and rolling it down. Um, when they know the staff will get them for that, they roll them down.
Where, where are the teachers during class changes?
In the hallway. They're standing at their doors so that they can kind of keep an eye on both the hallway and their classroom. Sometimes they'll slip off and go to the bathroom, but.
Well, I've had a conversation with, uh, Judge Creasy and he said, if anybody's uh, afraid to do something at their point, he said, send them to me.
Yes, sir.
Well, let me, let me ask what on that process to, in that process, that involves possibly the SO, SRO officer.
Yes.
Possibly you, possibly the juvenile coordinator, Ms. Sensing, that makes you still in that role. So it's quite a, it's quite a event and ordeal.
It's, yeah, doing that alone is, is still, sorry.
No, no, no. That's just what I'm asking. Uh, additionally, maybe Mr. Hawkins speak to this. If, if there is a student, anyone, I guess, in the school exposing themselves, as I understand, it must be reported to the Department of Children's Services. So, uh, that's, so you're not aware of that?
I, not, not in particular. I haven't heard any cases of that. Now, I would say they pressed the limit. So I'm not saying that that it hasn't. I just have not been, because I promise you, if I had been aware of that, we definitely would have prosecuted it, whatever we had to do at that point.
So I'm sorry to interrupt you. That time I was twice. I was looking to split it.
We just said, let the court deal with it.
How many, um, violations do they get before you notify the parents of what's going on?
So regardless, uh, well, the first one, they get notified because they got to get a change of clothes. So they're notified at that point. And then it, um, in your, uh, eighty percent of the time, probably somewhere, there's quite a bit of them that are angry that they have to do either come to the school or.
So the students take control of me, there's what you're saying.
Some of them are in that boat.
At what point would you consider it unruly behavior when they won't follow rules to send them on?
Um,
Or do you think dress code is not important enough to send them on?
I promise.
I know you.
I promise you dress code is important to me or I wouldn't have brought it up at this point. I promise. Cause I would have, if it wasn't important to me, I wouldn't have brought it up. Um, that, that's the point we're getting at is it's becoming a willful and persistent violation of school rules. Um, I, I don't know if I call it DHA for just dress codes, that anything would be done. Not, not, I didn't, I don't know what the point is. Um,
I mean, it sounds like they're interrupting everyone else's class time. So it is interrupting.
It is.
The learning for others.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions, Mr. Hayley?
I'm with Mr. Parker. I've got like ten different lanes at one time. I've had them for the last few days and, and, and Dr. Duke and I spoke yesterday for over two hours and I could shit your time. We, we don't agree on the policy. That's okay.
Yeah.
We, we know where each one stands on that. But I'm looking at the, the parents of the majority of the kids that aren't the issue. And those in, uh, while I'm Miss Brogdon, I, I, I think that we've got to find the avenue from the distance standpoint, we discussed that yesterday. Uh, I'm a hundred and ten percent behind you if we need to address discipline issues. We, we as a board, different interventions have, have mentioned that at our conference last year, we discussed that being a goal. Um, we also sat through some long classes this past weekend and listened to the roadblocks in the way of discipline. That while they are roadblocks, I think sometimes we've got to push that roadblock to, to get our message across. I know you called this about it for a long time.
Yes.
I called it for two weeks. And that's why at first I said, my email request on the agenda was to talk about a policy that, that we did ten, eleven years ago. That, that you were a part of, that we were here, I think you and me, Mr. Vandiver, may have been, you know, was here. I don't. Most of these time folks, any kids, like, you know, parents, they, they come and go with their kids.
Yes.
We may recall the outcome that being a little bit differently, but the last paragraph was a to, a topic of long conversation about putting a date over the timeframe. And I think it was agreed upon after a lot of discussion that that flexibility would lie in the timing of what spring be, is it March, is it May, it gets time. So I know that, that someone meant during that timeframe. I didn't hear about it until, until we discovered for obvious reasons, but I think it's just time to take a step back. Whether you're, who's guilty of what policy is not, for the question, that's how we're going to proceed with it. But I think this one, film an issue, whether it be at your school, whether it be on the school buses. I hear that from bus drivers on a regular basis. I hear it from, from different teachers and I know it's frustrating. A, a lot of that, in my opinion, is mainstreaming some of those kids back into the classroom and not addressing for whatever reasons, getting them out. Uh, uh, I was raised like you. I don't wear a suit and tie, but I, I know you are a dress code guy. You always dressed to the hilt. I think you wore the tie when you run, uh, I didn't have to tell you, but I wondered, but you know, it's that you and lots of others do that. It can be very pressure from it, but I don't know that I can do that. Maybe this is about as professional as I'm getting. That make me a better person? No, sir, it doesn't. But we, we all dress different. There's a lot of folks that aren't here that, that their kids can find a date. I've got your back on the discipline, maybe how we can go from here. I, I just think if we had this discussion with the dress code over a three month period, there would be a lot of discussion and we've been through that. There is a lot of discussion, there's a lot of opinions. I think just doing it without the wolf's involvement to me is a big challenge. Um, with that, I, I think you know where I stand and I appreciate your time, Mr.
Mr. Underwood?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. It does sound to me like a discipline issue. So how many kids were in ISS last year?
For dress code issues?
Yes.
Uh, I didn't look that number up as far, I just looked at the violations of it. Um, I know that there were, uh, if they don't get picked up or changed that day, they go to ISS. They don't get to just go back out into the, to the general public with that, you know, if they broke the dress code. So uh, although some of them we would have put down as a warning, we put them in there that in, into the, this one. Um, it may have been they spent four hours in the ISS room waiting on the fo, uh, their folks to get there to get them a change of clothes. So I would say somewhere around at least half of them.
Half of the ones that have been violated?
And, and that, that just, just a guess. There's probably more than that because, uh, some of them I'm just rough guessing that half of them, uh, that would have been their second offense.
So second offense, they go ISS, correct?
Yes, sir.
Third offense, they go to NDA or what's your third, third offense?
Um, typically we go two days of ISS and kind of build up from there. Once they get over five days of ISS, then it would be a suspension. So that's around seven when we start looking at suspensions. Depending on the timeline too. I mean, if, if they're doing it day in, day out, it might go a little quicker. Uh, but if it's more of a, like spread out over the course of a nine weeks or semester, then it might, it slows it down a bit.
It doesn't sound to me like our discipline is working.
It is not.
I think that needs to be addressed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Duke, um, you're not asking to, or you're, you're not, you, this is a, this is a call it a change, but it's really just a scenario where you're dealing with an issue.
Yes, sir.
But you're not asking for uniforms, obviously.
No, sir.
Okay. Um, let me ask you, from a administrative standpoint, was this your decision alone? How does that function? How does it work? Uh, how did you come, how did the school system come to this decision?
Obviously I could have made it by myself. I just be that kind of guy. That's not the way that I work. So, um, meetings with parents, meetings with our faculty, uh, and then a leadership team as well that has been involved in this. Um, obviously, you know, I'm out at lunch. I talk with the kids. I'm out in the hallways. I'm chatting with them about different things. Um, so there's been a variety of people that came to that. Now, regardless of what their decision was and what they talked about and brought to me and said, hey, this is what we'll look at. So ultimately our leadership team came to me and said, hey, this came to me and said, hey, this is what we want to do. Uh, this is how we want to address the issue. Uh, ultimately, that call goes on me. Um, you know,
Sure.
I don't have to agree with what they say, but that's how, the process was, we, we gathered information, we talked with the leadership team and uh they kind of proposed what they wanted to do in it.
Okay, so it wasn't just a decision alone in a vacuum by yourself?
I, I did not make that in my office, I can tell you.
Sure, thank you. And again, just so that we're clear, we're not, we're talking basically about every other day, there's a pretty good scenario or some, some issue going.
Yes, sir, with dress, with dress code. Um.
How much time does that take out of your day, teacher's day, staff's day?
The teachers are addressing and sending it out. So I mean, it, you know, depending on if they're in an argument or something like that on the way out the door, uh, that typically happens with middle school, school age students. Uh, they want to uh get a little sassy at times, right? So uh, that time, uh, then it's brought down to the front office, which typically that's in the morning. Um, Ms. Tammy and Ms. Rosen are down there, or swamped with people checking in late, bringing in notes, you know, other odd and in office activities that happen at, at seven fifty-five, seven forty-five. Uh, so on top of that, then we're having to make phone calls to get somebody to come get their dress, uh, their dress changed, whatever, you know, shorts, whatever. Um, and then depending on how long it is for them to get here, it's like, some of them are twenty minutes away, some of them are thirty minutes away if they can leave at that point. Sometimes it takes an hour that that child's out of the classroom.
Well, and that, that's what I was getting ready to say. What's the most, I've read a lot of the emails, just like other board members, one teacher in particular talked about wanting students in the classroom. I mean, is ISS or going to juvenile court, or is that the best thing for these students, or is it to be in the classroom?
Personally, I don't feel like it is, like, uh, you know, being in ISS room, um. I don't know if y'all have been over and seen our ISS room, seven cents in it, plus the teacher desk. It is not very big. Uh, there's not a lot of movement in there. We had motion sensor to start with, with like all the rest of our lights. Uh, we had to switch it in there because it was just, there was, you know, we're writing off, we're copying what the work is, uh, the lights would go off. So we've had to change that over to a switch. Um. So that is not productive. Um. You know, again, I think that it, and, and, and I love Judge Creasy's idea, or y'all was about, you know, especially if they're exposed, they're going to get done like that. Um, but if they're having to do that, then Wednesday, they're going to miss class to go to juvenile court. So we're right back in the same boat. You know, you talk about the process, just talking about the process, if we do do a willful and persistent violation of school rules, and they're going to be back and forth between NDA and, and Burns Middle School. NDA does a great job over there, but we're not always aligned day to day. So, you know, ultimately, the best place for that child to be is in the classroom sitting.
So is it, eh, is it what, with what you're dealing with on a pretty well every other day basis, is it interfering with the child's academics and with the, the operation of the school rules?
Yes, sir.
All right. How about modesty? Does it deal with modesty? Is it an issue with modesty?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I, I'm sitting here looking at the policy and it talks about the school administration has the right to determine whether the students are tired, is within, within the limits of decency and modesty.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we, we're talking about what ability you have, and it says the school administrator has a right to discern that. And I guess my question is, is that the reason you handled it the way you did?
It is. Yes, sir. I'd like, to me, that, what we're seeing and the issues that we're having are all dealt around not following the, you know, the first line, students are dressing in groom and a clean, neat and modest manner, and we're not hitting those. To me, that, when I read the policy, and I understand it says spring down at the bottom, if there's a major change, but if they're not meeting the first part, then I felt like, as I read down through there, that I had the right to handle that at the school level.
Well, let's see. You have a, you're doctorate in education?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So is that something that uh, and, and throughout your career, you have dealt with?
Yes, sir.
Um. I guess, I mean, what's, what's the ultimate goal that you're trying to achieve as far as why you, why you and the leadership team did what you did?
To be more efficient, so that we have the kids in the classroom learning, so that we can have better education for those kids. I mean, that's what it all comes down to. It's nothing, uh, it's no digging anybody in particular. Um, it's enough of a problem that we felt like that if we don't do something now, it's going to continue to spiral. Um, nothing seemed to be working in the three years that we've been there that, to get it fixed. We've tried everything and nothing has changed it. So in order for us to be more efficient, more effective for those kids in the classroom, we felt like this was a good move.
Right now, as it stands, this, you're, you have sent out that
Yes, sir.
In May.
Yes.
Sent that out in May.
Yes.
Did it get circulated other times?
We didn't recirculate it. I think that we may have put it out on Twitter uh during the course of the summer. Um, and obviously, we had open house, um, Tuesday, and those were the dress code that we had laid out that we sent out in May was addressed then too, so.
So as it stands right now, that's what parents are.
That's what they're.
That's what, what they're aware.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Parker.
I'm going to agree, disagree, and every senator with you. Um, one, one thing, I'm going I'm going to agree with you that ISS ain't, ain't the answer. I can tell you right now, none of them kids care about ISS. I have a kid in middle school, I have a kid in high school. ISS is not a punishment. ISS is the place for them to go for temporary, by time, and they, they really don't care about that. The discipline policy, and I guess my question to you is, what, what's next year's problem with Burns Middle School? And you don't have an answer. They don't know what your problem is with fixing this dress code issue with fixing that issue instead of fixing the, the bottom line problem. The bottom line problem is you've got kids and you've got a bunch of kids and I, I, I'm talking to, you said yourself, how many teachers dress coded every kid? They didn't raise their hand because they didn't dress code every kid. They need to. I mean, they need to dress code every kid, every single one. At some point, the kid has to go somewhere else. Home? NDA? I'm, everyone is sitting here watching these meetings knows I'm a big NDA advocate. I love that place. I love that principal. She's a rock star and she will straighten them. They do have collared black t-shirts with khaki pants, and they will sit in there without no piercings and no colored hair, and they will sit there as long as the administration tells them to sit in there, or they can go home. And then it's the parents' fault. But at some point, we have to bring it to the parents' fault to make it their fault. If you tell them they're dress coded and don't do it again, if they do it again, they gotta get out. Somebody should form a fashion. And that's a discipline issue, and I would be one hundred percent on board if you came to us and said, I got a discipline issue, the administration won't let me discipline these kids, my upper management won't let me discipline these kids, or I can't get my teachers on board to discipline these kids. Uh, we would be, I would be happy to help you with a discipline policy, but the policy that you're trying to put the dress code in, I don't think fixes the problem. With all that being said, the dress code is rules. You want rules to be followed. Policy is rules. We want policy to be followed. That's all I'm going to say about it. Thank you.
On the comments, Mr., oh, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Underwood, he's next, I apologize. Mr. Underwood?
Yeah, I just have some more questions. Mr. Duke had his uh leadership team there, and I'd like to hear what uh, Mr. Weeks, uh, opinion on this and how he was involved with that.
Mr. Underwood, I, I was not aware of the changes until Mr. Haley brought that to my attention. We have talked with Dr. Duke since then, and again, I, I'm supportive of, of Dr. Duke's responsibilities he has to educate students, and when there are things that are taken away from his ability to do that, uh, I feel strongly about supporting that. I, I do, and Mr. Haley and I have also discussed the conflict that he sees, the potential conflict he sees with policies. So I understand that from both sides.
Okay.
But, but, but the short term has been going on since twenty nineteen.
They're pushing the limit further and further each year. Yes, sir.
Well, it sounds like not enough was done back in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty.
Uh, if, if you'll go back, like, we had um COVID started around two thousand and twenty, so that spring, which was the first year we were in school, uh, at Burns Middle School. So we went out right before the end of it. So we didn't finish the year there, and then the next year was, um. We were sending kids out left and right for contact tracing and everything else. Um. And making issues of a short up an inch high above the knee was not a big issue when I was sending them out for twenty days because they had been around somebody that had COVID. So, um, you know, I, they, they say I ruled with an iron fist with that, but you know, I also understand that that kid had just missed twenty days of school. Can I put up with an inch right now? Uh, for that. Um, as we got back, the, the following year, there were still a lot of COVID restrictions that we had, and again, we were sending kids out for ten days, um, for being in contact with COVID. So again, it came to a weight part on my part, you know, well, I, I, I will take the blame for that. I didn't hammer it down like I probably should have, and it would probably wouldn't be in this spot, but I did have conversations with those guys on a daily to tell them to stop. And uh, as any rule uh, or anything you say, when we have those conversations and they see it as a slap on the wrist, it doesn't fix the problem. So uh, this year, we had started hammering down on that. Uh, and it is not, it didn't change a lot of them, so.
Mr. Parker?
My issue with it concerning the policy is at what point, I mean, you're going through and you're picking out which parts of the policy you want to do, and you went through, all the way through until the very last line, and that's the part that wasn't done. So to me, I don't think you can just pick out the first paragraph and say, I've done that, so I you know, I, I've applied the policy. I think you have to do it as a whole. It has to go all the way down. You can't just pick out one section. In my opinion.
Any other questions for Dr. Duke, Mr. Haley?
Ten, you're playing top of the threshold. I'm just probably going to do one more. The uh yesterday I reached out, I, I think there's got to be some other over here. I don't think, nobody will be in this. And, and my comments that I, that I would want to be broadcast and want to be heard by the parents, I want to be heard by the students, I want to be heard by your teachers. You heard it for that, that period, is that whether I think that this was done in a way that would allow me to support it, isn't the question, it's what do I need to support you moving forward with this dilemma? We have four little schools, and I find it really hard to believe that we have one that has such dress code violations. I'd like to hear the number from other schools. If, if, if this was a planned process, then I think those are questions as the board has asked. And I, I appreciate your enforcement of rules in general. Uh, I want to tell the kids that I must support you at every point, whether I agree with what's been done here or not, or how I react to it. That's not a free pass for them, when it's not a free pass for the parents. I agree with Mr. Parker that we've all had the talks with the juvenile judge when he was running, and I think from what I've gathered in conversations since then, we all seem to have some of the same concerns. I can pick a word out of this policy and say, I agree, disagree with it, but it the intent of this policy was clear to me, I was here. It's not clear to everybody's. And I think the intent was, uh, any change that will I do toward to be substantial cause what's substantial might not be to me. I think saying no more shorts tomorrow, but it's pretty substantial. Especially to the seventy or eighty percent of the kids that are infected. Next year, if we allow that to happen without addressing a direction or giving the administration of pushing some support for that, but I think we are not fixing issue. After that, the girls wearing skirts and the world. So I think there's a focus on some Johnny Chairman says no pants, but there can be no pants, girls and boys too, and I've been up ahead, I'm guessing that you probably want to. You, and so it, how do we address that? That, that's been another question. I know you give it a lot of effort. My intent is not done about that. It's just the process that it went through. I felt very cozy that we have a policy that addresses that. The first call I got was in June, and by, I get lots of calls. I, I direct some of Dr. Weeks to need to be fitted to, but most of them I refer them to a policy. So I referred to the policy several times. I sent to several people, and I answered their question on what the policy said. And that is where the problem came in, whenever July came around and somebody sent me a screenshot on Facebook, which I don't watch real close, and, and I can see it then. So that's why we're here. Um. Understand the issue, my intent is not to, not to beat up one of you, but I, I can't, as a board member, let the board get their pick knocked out from under the on, on, on the policy. Next week will be something else, another policy. Well, we didn't read it that way, and that, that was aside. So with that being said, I would, I would like to ask you if, if there's a compromise, if we can leave the old policy in place this year, we can spend more time with you, addressing and looking at different avenues, and if we feel like next year it's a problem, we can address that. I think we can both come out and, and I'll say both. The parents issue you deal with, not me. Um, I think we agreed this group yesterday, so I think we're good with that. So I asked that question, is that something they bring us on board, that you'd be on board with to address it over the next year?
Uh, yes, sir. I, like I said, I and I just don't, um. The thing that I see with it is if we were to take these out, again, we're like not having to deal with it from the standpoint of time. Um, that's the only thing I see with it. Now, I'm going to work with you, we're going to do what we need to do. If I need to compromise, we'll compromise. Uh, uh, I would like to lay out a good compromise to it because I, I really feel like if um, it's going to get worse. So, um, you know, I saw it why several other kids get out of practice, you know, those shorts are getting shorter and shorter. Like they walk in the school building with those, it's going to be a battle on me from day one. Now I'm out to get somebody. And I'm not, I'm following the dress code that we have, or if it's put back that way. Uh, now I'm out to get them, you know. So I'll be fighting quite a bit of uh it's anger towards me. I mean, it's pretty bad already, but I feel like both tend to probably have those together to some degree, but I really think that, that ultimately we might have, I, I don't, it doesn't need to be a war against the principle. It doesn't need to be a parents against parents. If I go by the policy, I, I'd have too much to probably discuss and try to work through. But I thought really hard of trying to find a good way to address this now without it being a major issue. It's not about it. There are concerns. I think these parents are the ones that give to put more shorts. I think concerns also not to get to our shores, but they don't want to see this one also. And this one, I don't, I'm talking about your dress code, this one, I'm talking about in general, I think it's a society that's, that's gone astray, and I think it's easy when it's a little bit of time that it continues. So you gotta kind of start in that, in, in the direction of anger. It's been a good thing to get that sorted, but that would be my, my question to you. Or maybe, anything else to comment there, please?
Mr. Parker, other questions?
This is an engine item. Take action on it. I'm on my.
Do you have any other questions? I want to make sure we, let, let Dr. We, or excuse me, Dr. Duke
Go ahead.
If he wants to say, if he wants to.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Anything else, Dr. Duke?
I, I don't have.
All right. Um, again, and, and I appreciate, uh, Ms. Brockton's comment about reading the policy all the way through. But I, I would point again to that section, and it says, in matters of opinion, the judgment of the principle or designation shall prevail. So we're given a, a quite a bit of latitude in this policy.
And we never should have had the last paragraph.
I, I guess we can sit and argue, but I, I, I let you have your, your time, Ms. Brockton, with all due respect. So but it's a, it's a scenario where we have given the principal a lot of authority. In matters of opinion, the judgment of the principle shall prevail. That's, and specifically, we're talking about decency or modesty. So I, I, I certainly understand, and again, I guess it's open to the I, the interpreter of what quote, uh, I, the interpreter of what quote a change is, a major change, substantial change. I certainly think efforts of the school administration has tried to, tried to correct something that's been a long-term issue, so. Thank you for being here. Do you have anything else? Thanks, sir. Sorry, Mr. Parker, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to revert. As middle schools dress code policy back to last year's policy due to lack of following. Board policy. If I get a second, I would like a comment on the discussion.
Yes, sir. We have a motion. Is there a second? Second, by Mr. Haley. How was your discussion?
Comment on, on the motion, Mr. Doug, I don't want this to be a dig at you. It's not. I, I hope that. Um, I hope that you come back. Ask any board member to put you on the agenda. Ask yourself to be put on the agenda. I would love to help your discipline policy. And I would stand behind you and every other principal in this county. If they have a problem disciplining kids or moving kids. Moving the five percent out of the way of the 95% so that the 95% can move forward. We have a great. Option for that. It's NDA with a rock star of a principal that will move that five percent forward if they be. And I will stand behind you if you need help in a discipline policy. Thank you.
Other comments by board members?
I second what Mr. Parker says. I heard and, and, but I'm gonna go a step further and say that I hope I'm welcome to come to your school and visit and be. Proactive towards this instead of you coming to ask. And I, I think, I think it's been there for a while. Not at your school. I think it's been there countywide. I hear more school busts and. We've got to get some direction on that and stop fixing it. We still, we're, we're. But. We need, we need to.
Other board members, Charlie?
Judge Gracie has said, you know, send them to me, I think. Few trips over there from some of them with their parents. We've got to get parents that control of their kids.
Other comments by board members? Mr. Underwood, anything?
No.
Yes, sir. With your motion, I just, I just disagree that they're the, quote, a violation of the policy. I think we, what we've got is a level five school with a level five teachers, a level five administration. Is trying to solve a problem and they're looking at the policy and they're seeing and, and maybe the policy needs to be addressed because it says. What it says, it gives them the right, the principal the right on issues of decency and modesty, and it's been an ongoing problem. It wasn't done in a vacuum. You had a leadership team that are there. These are professionals. I say it numerous times. These are professionals. These are not in education. So they're, they are trying to solve a problem and I commend them for trying to do that. Probably in the minority here tonight, but that's okay. It's, it's, seems like it's getting pretty often, but nonetheless, um. For that reason, I can't, I can't, I can't support the motion, but any other comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Haley.
And we probably could get on this more when it comes time to address policy, to address the dress code policy, but. You know, it, the last time it took months and it'll take months this time, but. I just read it different than you do and, and I agree that in the matter of opinion, the judgment does fall with the principle. But that is in the next to last paragraph that speaks about violations or when there's a question of what they're actually wearing. By the dress code policy, and I fully. Think you still have that. If, if they're meeting your dress code and somebody's wearing a shirt that's inappropriate. Or is rolling their pants leg up, it's inappropriate, then I think you do have that judgment. I don't read that line that Ms. Brogdon was speaking of as the last paragraph. The last paragraph covers. All the rising to go above and beyond what we had above. If it comes to us and I think there's separate issues. We, we can deal with that.
Other comments, but more members? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Vandiver?
No.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
No.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
For A to N.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have under four B, City of Dixon SRO MOU approval. I think that was in the email, I think it was.
Board members, uh, that, that MOU was emailed to you and under the protection of state law to protect our, our MOU with our. City of Dixon SRO, so we would request your approval for that. Uh, if there are items that need to be discussed from that item, I would request that we did that in executive session. And we'll tell you that City of Dixon has already approved the SRO MOU. And they are prepared to send that to the state so that they can receive funding for that. And this new SOU. This new MOU is under the auspices of the new governor's money that's coming out to places, SROs in all of our buildings. So. You've had an opportunity to review that again, uh, under the protection of the state law for our safety plans and security plans, and we would ask that. That we not discuss that in public forum, but you, you had opportunity to read that.
Before we jump to board members, Mr. Hall, comments?
Yeah, just, just for the board members uh to note, as a part of that governor's new uh thing, the governor did change. So you might have noticed that there is some change to this SRO policy from our old SRO policy. And this is a mandated form by the state. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that, that it's. It's one size fits all now and this is, this is the one. But if the board wants to make individual changes, then we have, we have ways to do that with the local.
Alright.
Just wanted to make that point.
So other. Other questions that we have about the proposed SRO MOU? No questions. I agree to deal with this. MOU?
Yes, sir. It's, Mr. Hall stated, the, the state has given municipalities and county governments. A, a, a basic template and said this is the only thing they will accept. Uh, so we are prepared to sign that. Chief Lewis, uh, Mayor Weiss, and I'll go back and say even Sheriff Feeds, uh, have all told us. We understand and know you have to sign this. We, we've already done that with the county. We feel very good about that. And the city has requested that we sign this, but if we need to go back and modify something specifically with our locals, we have that flexibility to propose that to them.
Your recommendations for passage?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, uh, by Mr. Haley, second by Mr. Parker. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Vandiver?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All on.
Motion carries.
Mr. Phil, we've got.
Yes, sir. Let's do so. Thank you for the reminder. Hour thirty-five, actually.
Appreciate your work on these over the years. It's been a progressive thing, but it seems the, um, the people that are doing it know why they're doing it. And I think it's benefited the kids. It's benefited them. It certainly benefited us and it also helped one. And keep that track. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? We have a motion by Mr. Haley to approve as her second. Second by Mr. Parker. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Row call vote.
Mr. Vandiver?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yep.
All ayes.
Motion carries. Next on, on the agenda is for D long-term capital projects.
For members under item four D, uh, Brad has compared the proposed addition to Dixon Elementary School that you had requested. So on page thirty and thirty-one, uh, you will see the addition of the eight classrooms that you had requested that Brad take a look at. And so on page thirty, you'll see the footprint of those classes and on page thirty-one, you'll see the overhead, um, landscape portrait of where those would fit in. Uh, again, you see that those are on the, um, the back right side of that picture near Spiesley Drive where those, uh, there are several portals back in there. And, uh, he talked about that connector hallway. So it's coming in nicely where he had looked at. And again, you have some, some sketches of that. Uh, Brad cannot be with us tonight. But if you have comments that you would like for me to send to Brad or if there are any things, uh, we do have a planning session that's coming up. I think it's the first full week of August. So this will be on the agenda for there. And, uh, I think we are, I think you've already made decisions about Charlotte Middle School. He was still, uh, doing some kind of last minute drawings and updates to the items that you discussed there. Uh, but if you have anything specifically related to this sketch that, that he's provided for you, I'd be glad to send those messages to him for you. Uh, but he's planning on being as well as Hewlett Spencer at our August planning session.
August the tenth at six thirty at EMS Live, correct?
Sounds correct. Yes, sir.
All right. Six o'clock. Six o'clock. I mean, I said six, six o'clock.
It is six o'clock. And while we're just talking about that date, we, we will have our dinner at five o'clock that evening. And, uh, you'll get to meet all the new administrators at five o'clock.
Board members, questions, uh, on this, the long-term capital project? Mr. Parker?
Can you help me out on this? Let me look at the page thirty. Is it in the top right? Is that the cafeteria or would that be the gymnasium?
That is the existing gymnasium. Yes.
Where is the cafeteria located? Hundred?
Yeah, kind of underneath there to the side.
So small.
Small, uh, but it is a small school. I will say that. I'm, I'm going to use the word cramped more than, when you small. It's a, it is, it is a low basement level area.
How do we feel about adding the extra classrooms? And are cafeteria and kitchen area accommodating the kids that we're going to be adding? Cause we're ready, we're ready classrooms to add kids. So how are we going to, will the cafeteria and kitchen accommodate the kids in the classrooms that we're adding?
You're moving a lot of portables off that campus. So you're probably not adding, I, I'm going to say sixty to seventy-five kids at most.
Because we had portables there.
Um, cafeteria is less than ideal. Gymnasium is less than ideal. But these, these are the directions that we gave Brad. Uh, a couple of meetings ago, you'd ask him to sketch that in. I think that's what he's done. And in our original proposal, if you'll remember probably back to last fall, um, Brad had done a, a complete new addition with a modifications to the gymnasium and I believe a new cafeteria at that point in time. And I think, I think this board moved away from that and back to this classroom wing addition.
Thank you.
Other comments by board members? I would say, um, I was, went back and I looked at the Lewis Group report that dated November the fifth of two thousand twenty-one. So, uh, that guidance probably is at some point we don't act on it is going to start getting stale. So I know we've, we've been planning, uh, we were planning before then, uh, but, uh, um, we've now got Charlotte middle practically to a point. I think we're, we're on track to move forward with it. This is what we had asked for from Wild Cook and Martin. So we'll have it. Um, my hope is that we can have a good work session on tenth, I think it was, we said, and start moving forward on giving more direction. And I know the county mayor's here. I'm, I'm hate to put him on the spot.
Uh, it happens all the time.
Well, just, uh, just from a standpoint of, from your vantage point, are we still ready to move forward? County commission that you know of is, is at least receptive to is what we've been working.
Yes, our discussion's been pretty much the same that we've been, that we're moving toward the same path of, uh, discuss funding and what type of funding we need and the, the scope of the project. I know Charlotte Middle School, Dixon Elementary, and a few other things that I think have been discussed and, uh, we welcome the opportunity to have those discussions when y'all see, see appropriate, see fit to us do that.
Yes, sir. Thanks for being here. Other two commissioners, thank you all for being here tonight as well. Board members, any other comments or thoughts? On this long, on the disportion of the long-term plan, as we're calling our project?
The plan is that the August tenth session to kind of get the weeds on this with, uh, ideas on what else besides these two projects that, that she knows I did.
I would think so, but, but specifically let's hone in. I, I, I would, I was, me talking, I would like to see us hone in on these two projects to get those solidified. Before, I know there are other things we want and need to talk about, but these are, these are, we, we prioritize three. And these, this is two of the three. The other one was the CTE, potential CTE building at Creekwood.
Mr. Van Board, my, um, in, in talking with Ron, particularly with the Charlotte Middle School project, I think what Ron's informal discussion with my office has been, uh, it would be their desire if, if, if we get a green light from the county commission, and I think the mayor and I had talked about a so, uh, late September, mid to late September presentation to county commission. Ron's discussion was if, if we are ready, if we are on track with opening Charlotte Middle School fall of twenty-five, it would be his desire that they start demolition work at the old Charlotte school sometime in November, uh, before the winter gets set in. So he'd like to start that demolition project then, um, get the, the land settled, compacted a little bit, and then start preparing, uh, whatever can start from group would get that project, uh, be ready to start as soon as the weather breaks in the spring. Again, that's, it's, that's Ron's suggestion to us. If we're at that point in time and the county commission approves that, uh, that's, it's a long time away, but it's really not a long time away. So, um, that, that's kind of been the, the timeframe we've been talking about. So if there are other ideas and other things that we need to talk about that, whether they impact the Charlotte Middle School project, uh, I think, you know, we can, we can look at both of those.
Mr. Porter?
I love the timeframe. Faster the better. I don't think that we can start anything until the county commission has a vote, until they can vote to approve that money. But that money will be given to Dixon County Schools for their capital outlay projects. I don't know how we can start demolition. I would love to start tomorrow. If we start tomorrow, it'd be great. But to tear down a building that is currently being used and it's still usable in its current situation without the guarantee of the commission on a, on a majority vote, saying that we're going to get X number of dollars. I mean, X number of dollars is there. I, I, I'm thinking to myself, just kind of rattling my head. At Charlotte Middle School and Dixon Elementary School and, and Creekwood CTE building. Where, where, where the, the lot of money that the commission has set aside or the, the mayor has set aside for Dixon County School projects, which is okay, but until the guarantee is there and the commission has their vote, I don't know that we can move forward with a demolition project. Not for sure that we're going to have the money to rebuild at that point.
I, I agree a hundred percent. I, I hope I didn't imply that because that's, that's what I was saying is that we make our presentation to county commission late September. They look at it September, October. If they give us the green light, then we go ahead with demolition. So that's, that we're, we're on the same page a hundred percent.
Perfect.
Other question? Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry. I didn't, I appreciate you. Y'all taking time to recognize me again. Again, I know the Charlotte project seems to be the bigger project on this, but for us to borrow the money and borrow it efficiently, effectively, uh, we need a comprehensive plan. We, we need to look at this project law. It, it costs money to borrow going back out to the market. So we, you know, I could go out and throw a dollar figure out now, but, uh, if we borrow that, if it's not enough, it's too much. There's a cost involved in it. So again, uh, I know y'all are working diligently to get this done, but I, uh, from a standpoint of having all these projects done properly, borrow for it and, uh, we need to have a, a final big number on that. So that way I go to the bond market and get us the best possible rate to do this.
Yes, sir. My question, dude.
I bet you. Thank you, Mayor, for pitching out. I was baiting on asking, but, um, I know there's been some discussion that, that in my mind, I was looking to have something comprehensive. Well, within the year, I, 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 I think the work session is a fair discussion. I'm not sure we could make that September, but I think October we could, sure. If, if we, if we put those things, not re-prioritize them, adding those items, that, that we would see to be a need to put a general budget to get that put together. And I, I think there will be some more painting involved, but not as in deep as it was, but to have some direction or what we want, but I'm guessing. And we discussed that. I, I, I think that's probably in the works of some degree. All this is, it's probably, I'm assuming there'll be some ideas put together that we share by the end of the whole session.
All right. Other comments by board members? We'll take it up more and more depth on the work session, August the tenth. Uh, next on the agenda is the short-term capital projects.
Board members, I know at, at some point in time, there has been discussion on other things in Australia. I think this feeds right into that discussion as well. Things that, that our office has had on our minds, that principals have brought to us, that, uh, Mr. Clifton's office has brought to us and the things that, um, we see as, as larger, short-term capital projects. And again, this, this might be a part of that comprehensive plan. It might not. Uh, but we have, we've gone through and I'm gonna say semi-prioritize the thing with safety and security on the top. And again, we can talk about some of those in executive session as we need to. Uh, but there are places that, uh, that need some serious painting. There are some places, uh, you'll see Burns Middle School Security, uh, security, the, the welcome center is going to be completed by, by the start of school next week. Uh, you see sewer systems, welcome centers on Burns is there twice. If you would, the number two welcome center that's about a third of the way down or a quarter of the way down, um, my suggestion is that we move that to Van Lear, the second. Uh, Van Lear's, it's one, two, three, about the six line down welcome center. It says Burns Middle, but I'd like to, that should be Van Lear. Van Lear's, um, uh, sort of isolated. They do have an SRO, but I think that would be the next welcome center I'd like to add to our campuses. And again, these are all for discussion. Um, the next two items, artificial turf and relocation of tracks at Dixon County High School, artificial turf at Creekwood High School and the ball fields. I think we've talked about the benefits of those and how that would help our athletic programs. Uh, it would bring us up to date with what other school systems that are much smaller than we are doing. And again, I think we as a school system like to be leaders rather than followers. So uh, I think that would help all of our athletic teams. It would help us to utilize those spaces in a better, better light. Um, it would help us to use multiple facilities or one facility for multiple sports and multiple events. And then we'll go back to a comment that was made a little bit earlier about the CTE program at Creekwood. Um, right now, the largest problem with the CTE program at Creekwood and that building back there is the location. And we don't have a good location to put that building, uh, where we talked about the parking lot. I think every utility that goes into Creekwood High School is right where we've been talking about putting that building. And so, uh, lots of dollars to simply even consider looking at that and moving them. Uh, if for instance, we were off of the soccer field at Creekwood High School and soccer played ball on what would no longer be the football field, but it would be the multi-athletic field. Uh, there's a nice flat building space right there on Creekwood High School campus that a nice CTE building would go on, I believe. And so, uh, I think lots of these things, for instance, cover and help us in a lot of different areas. Um, our athletic directors are on board with, uh, with artificial turf. I've talked with our major sport, athletic coaches, uh, as well as our principals. So they're kind of excited about that. Um, and I had mentioned to those of you that were at, uh, summer law, if we could maybe select some times, we, we have a couple of places. And we've already had some visits from some folks that, um, I'd like to show you what some of those facilities look like. Again, I'm not interested really in going to some of our larger neighbors that are maybe have more resources than we do, but I'd like to, uh, for us to go visit a couple of smaller school systems. I know Henry County is just upgraded their facilities. Benton County is just upgraded their facilities. Uh, Crockett County is just updated and they're going to be playing their, their first sports, uh, this fall on those. So I'd like us to take a look at some of those if you, again, we'll talk about that at our August planning session. Uh, you'll see there were list, uh, nothing as serious as that sidewalks, some lighting and some fields. And again, I don't see that we do any field lighting before we do anything with uh, the fields themselves and make those decisions. Um, canopies, painting, windows, parking lots, paving, uh, parking lots, parking lots, roofing, carpeting, painting, painting, painting. So you see lots of projects on there. And again, uh, we are currently in a position where we can do these items, uh, with money that is in our fund balance currently. So, um, the timing is right for these. And I would like, um, like us to have some discussion on that at our August planning session. And if you are prepared for us to do some of these, I'd like for us to go ahead and get started while we can do that.
We didn't feel true.
I think so. Thank you.
Questions on the, uh, short-term capital projects? So, so Dr. Reese, you're thinking some of these we will be able to do out of the fund balance?
I think we'd be able to a large majority of them.
Maybe others we, yeah.
And, and I think they fit nicely into some of these other projects. Again, when we're talking about CTE buildings, you know, solving one problem here clears up and gives us a green light for another, another area too. I think there are a lot of things that, um, I'm excited about and I hope this board can be as well.
Mr. One, here, go ahead, Mr. Joe.
I know, I know Dr. Reese gets antsy when somebody said charge that. But this, this point is the purpose of those. I mean, at Dixon County, uh, if anybody wanted to get on campus or do hard, all they got to do is come through Dyckman Road or Pond Lane, come through the grass and the weeds. I went, I went on campus, uh, one day in the one in Dixon, one in Bigamath. Uh, for me, it needs to be on the building rather than out from it. And the things that, I know we've talked about some things that are possible, but, but as far as doors need to be more secure. But that's fifty thousand each, plus of those. About a hundred thousand we spent. And then Underwood brought up the fact that it's narrow. We can't get buses through there safely. Although guys, other than they, you can see where the tires have, the curves. Need to be widened somewhat. But for this, I like to see things done to the building more than, than the building out from the building.
If this board's not interested in that, we can certainly cross that off.
Mr. Joe, I, I personally think they serve, just, you know, I don't know about you, but, uh, honestly, a police officer, I generally look at the speed. Some of that serving as a deterrent is a welcome center. I think a lot of systems have them. Think they do serve a role. It's, uh, priority at every school. Uh, I don't know that it would be at every school, but a school like Van Lear, elementary, it's, uh, uh, could benefit from it. That's just my, my fault. What you, your point is taken. That, uh, it, yeah, it is. But I know we've done a lot of upgrades to schools. Ton, ton to entrances. And obviously there's a new state law that, and I know most schools are emphasizing that doors have to be locked and all exterior doors have to be recalled. If they're not being locked, then it's an issue and it just continues to escalate. So I, I think.
If anybody's got a mind to do something, they'll find a way to do it. But I'm saying.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
If, you know, if they're there to deter somebody getting on campus that doesn't need to be on campus, there's still ways they can do that.
Sure.
Mr. Joe, can I just add, add to that? Cause I think when they first did the performance center, I think I was probably most opposed because I, I don't think I really got it until I started looking at it and visiting, especially at the high school. But it's not really to keep them out. It's to build another barrier of communication. As far as going around, they're going to go around, but especially the high school, there was some trafficking and out bringing pizzas for lunch, dropping off food, coming going.
That was.
As a board member, I have to show my ego for, for giving my license to get in. It really has toned the traffic down. So if you're telling ninety-five percent of the traffic down, it might make the ill-doers more visible. People might want to find a way, just to prove it all.
Appreciate it.
Other comments on the short-term capital projects? Hearing done. I'm assuming we'll have that on the agenda as well for the work session.
Yes, sir.
It's all right. We'll move on to the next agenda item unless there's other comments. Hearing done under four F, Director of Schools Evaluation. See, we're receiving there, passing it out.
Mayor, mayor, please stay for one second.
Mr. Underwood, um, we're passing out the director's evaluation now. So obviously you are not going to have that present with you, uh, but I, we're going to turn the floor over to Mr. Hall. And Mr. Hall did the simulation, accumulation of the, of the information. So, uh, Mr. Hall?
Uh, yes, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Vander, or, uh, board members, uh, as a result of the receipt back of the surveys, uh, and the average, uh, of all of the, uh, surveys received back, the domain average for board relationships is three point three, three, three. Uh, the domain average for community relationships is three point five, three, three. The domain average for staff and personal relationships is three point six, two. The domain average for educational leadership is three point six, two, five. The domain average for business and finance is. The domain average for business and finance is three point five, six, seven. And the domain average for strategic planning is two point eight, six, seven, for an overall average of three point four, two, four. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hall? Hearing none, uh, just so everyone's aware of the scale, uh, a three point four comes in at usually meets expectations. Know that's, uh, down from a prior year. So, but at any rate, if you all, as board members have questions for Dr. Weeks, uh, as I understand, he's happy to meet with you, discuss any issues on the, how to improve, how to change, how to, uh, proceed to with improving schools. So, uh, he has an open door policy for that and he's happy to be. Any comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I always got something. Um, you know, I filled this out, have no problem telling anybody. If I could have signed it, I would have, but I did it via email, didn't have it. Um, I asked January work session, January regular session, it was added to the agenda. There was forty-five questions, I, I only answered twenty-seven of them. And, um, I don't like the scale. I don't like the scale, it's not the scale, it's not the same scale that we use with our administration. It's not the same scale that we use with our teachers. Um, in my mind, a director who is doing a contracted job. So he is in a, under contract to do a job. If he continuously meets expectations is, is what I feel like that's just your contracted job. Um, as we know, the, the director has a bonus system in his contract, which I'm also one hundred percent okay with. That doesn't bother me at all, as being a salary employee and a man wants to make more money and he has talked the board into giving a bonus. Then, then we have inherited that, whether we like it or not, doesn't matter. The bonus system is a good thing for a salary employee to push a salary employee to do more than their contracted job to get more money. And I'm okay with all of that, other than the way the scale reads continuously meets expectations, um, is a four. And doing your contracted job gives you a four. Getting a four gives you a bonus, um, which is no more than a contracted job. If, I hope this makes sense, I hope I'm not suffering around here. But on that, the, the question is, I answered twenty-seven out of forty-five questions. I'm not really sure what happened to the, maybe Mr. Hall can clean this up. The ones that I didn't answer, I assume just were not averaged in, is, is my assumption of that. Um, if you don't hear nothing bad, nor do you hear anything good from public, from teachers, from principals. I could only assume that the director done his contracted job. But with that being said, him doing his contracted job gives him a four and that doesn't take care of the taxpayers as far as giving him a bonus to his salary. And to not know the real answer is a reason that I couldn't answer the majority of those questions. Um, something I wanted to help me answer those questions with a self-evaluation, I brought that up in January work session. I had to agenda of January planning session, it was speak about, I thought that it was, uh, it was definitely understood of what I was saying. I felt like I had some, some little backing from the board and the director himself as he self-evaluates his administration at the lower levels of principal and I believe on up, if I'm not mistaken. So I think the director thought it was a good idea, but without self-evaluation, you know, what, what, what do I know? That you do on daily basis, I don't know. And so I did not answer much of them questions, that's why I didn't answer them. Because given an unfair answer to, an unfair, given the director an unfair low score is not fair to the director. And given the director an unfair high score is not fair to the taxpayer. So the ones that I felt like I didn't know the answer to, didn't get answered. I hope that wasn't added into as a one or a five, either one. Um, I hope they were just not average. Um, but that is my reason for not answering the majority of the questions on there. I thought long and hard about it and I wanted to answer them as I can only assume that he's doing his contracted job. That just gives him a bonus and that's not fair to taxpayers because that's only an assumption on my part. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Other comments before, man?
Would Mr. Hall, would Mr. Hall address that?
Can you ask about, um, what I understand your question to be, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if you just want to repeat your question.
If, if, if a not, a non-answered question just didn't get averaged in, is that correct?
The average was taken by the average of the responses received.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Other comments, but more members. Mr. Parker, I, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but it may sound argumentative, but I'm looking under the first heading, Board Relations. Under the Director's Report for July through July the fifteenth, Board Relations. Dr. Weeks says he attended a regular session agenda with packets and meetings. He attended the summer law planning. He had a, uh, convention planning, capital outlay projects, policy review, uh, fall district meeting planning. Then under Community Relations, he attended Taste of White Bluff, County Commission Meeting, Regular Planning, DHA Reviews, Scholarship Committee Meetings, had breakfast with Mayor Ral, uh, attended the, uh, the Railroad Museum, Trailblazer Awards Dinner, uh, attended Chamber of Commerce Luncheon, Out of Zone Reviews and Processing. And, and I can go on, but under each of those categories, just so the public's aware, we get a monthly report of those things that he's doing that are relevant to these topics. So to certainly you, you have information about what he's doing on a monthly basis. And, and I do because we get a monthly report. And I guess if that's not sufficient, then maybe we need to work on that and get maybe more detailed information, but that's what's been put together. I mean, strategic planning, uh, attended, looks like a district leadership team meeting, summer training, PD calendaring, uh, Tennessee All Course, uh, tutoring Review, Safety Reviews, uh, Third Grade ELA Data Reviews, Fall Activity Plan, Herelet Spencer, uh, Timeline Meeting, Back to School Administrator Meeting Plan, Short-Turn Capital Needs Plan. So, I mean, we've been getting these since our last.
Every month.
Sir, every, every month and we, and, and I guess we could ask him to put in more detail a, a paragraph for each one of those, but.
Yeah, that's exactly what I wanted, that's exactly what I asked for in January as a self-evaluation. If you scored yourself above a four, why did you score yourself above a four? If you scored yourself below a three, what can we do to improve you? Because evaluation has got to be a self-building thing and it has to be something that helps him learn to do better. But if we don't know what he's doing on daily basis, I, I know, I see him at Creekwood games, I see him at basketball games, I see him softball games. Every time Dixon plays Creekwood, he's always there, no doubt about any of that stuff. I'm not doubting any of that, but this has got to be something that helps the director realize what he needs to do to get better. What he needs to do to get better and then he looks at that and says, you know, I, I don't deserve a, uh, continuously meeting expectation. I deserve a, most of the time, what can we do to get you to continuous? And if we don't know what he rates himself, then we.
That's a different topic.
Don't know how to do it.
But that's a different topic than not knowing what he's doing, because you're knowing what he's doing. I guess is what, what I'm saying, earlier you said you didn't.
Yeah, the school didn't burn down, he, he did okay, I guess, but I don't know what he does as far as giving him more than five.
Well, but, but that's a different, the school burning down is a lot different than, uh, Staff and Personal Relations, attending sick leave review banks.
Well, Staff and Personal Relations is where I have the biggest trouble because I don't know what the principals think about it, what he does with them on a daily basis, you know?
But that's different, you're willing to change the, the evaluation for them, I get that.
You're gonna change the whole thing.
I get that, but this is the, this is the, 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 the evaluation, uh, plan we have now.
That's what I, I agree with that and that's why.
Yeah.
I feel like it is the plan that we have, it's under his contract and I just want to let him know that I didn't answer them for the fairness of the taxpayers and yourself, not, not one or the other. It was just a non-answer, so, so twenty-seven of mine were answered, the rest of them wasn't because I didn't know the answer and I didn't want to guess in the middle to go one way or another, they just wasn't answered. And that was what I wanted to tell you. Now, I, I do want this to be totally redone, the scale redone, the evaluation, the question, the self-evaluation, letting TSBA do it, let TSBA do it with us, maybe even involve Central Office in a evaluation of the director that would be, that would go to TSBA, that would be brought to us with nothing more than the results. Don't have any, nothing but results of, of, and then we can maybe work from there down so that we can accurately evaluate the director along with Mr. Director. Okay, your staff didn't like this and what can we do to improve it? Cause it's gotta be an improving thing, not just a, a finger pointing and not just a, okay, I'm gonna point my finger at you, you did, you do something better. Or not just a, here you go, here's a bonus, do it again. It needs to be a, uh, something that helps build the school system to be better as in leadership. And that's why I just wanted to say, I didn't answer them because I didn't know the answer and it wasn't fair to either, either side of it.
Very good. Other comments before them? All right, um, I don't think there's any action that needs to be taken, it was just a report to us. We'll move on to item number five, Director's, Director of School Report.
Um, first of all, I was going to recognize Ben Torres. Ben is the Associate Executive Director at TSBA and Ben and his wife were with us and I think they slipped out at the break. But, uh, many of you know Ben is a Dixon County citizen, has his family in Dixon County Schools. And so, uh, he is a great friend of the school district and so Ben, uh, was here. Uh, Mayor Ral and County Commissioners, Commissioner Britt and Commissioner Gray, thank you for being here. Mayor Ral, I would like to share this with you. Most of you remember at our end of the year banquet last year, Mayor Ral was named the friend of Dixon County Schools. And we gave him a honorary, um, that night, or an honorary, um, certificate that night and we had our plaque, uh, was misplaced somewhere, so Mayor, we can have your plaque. And, uh, I think he left it somewhere, but Mayor Ral has been a great friend to me, serving as director. And I said these things the other night, he's, uh, he's been a great friend and he's a friend to Dixon County Schools. So Mayor, I'd like to give that to you. Put that on the wall somewhere and I'm sorry I interrupted you from going home.
No. I told you both times he's done this, if I knew I was getting a warrant on the press box. Thank you for your support, Mr. Jay.
Um, we're gonna say the things that we had mentioned, uh, would say, uh, around you, there's, there are a lot more boxes and what might look like junk to you. Uh, all around the side over here and all across the front, TriStar Horizon, uh, helped collect school supplies for us and they brought those back a couple of days ago. And, uh, they did a nice job of, uh, preparing all that DCA, it worked with them and Rhonda and, and her folks and our staff will be dividing these up and sending those out to schools. So, uh, we're thankful for TriStar for doing that. Also thankful for Kenneth Forte and Dixon Gas and Dowtown and several folks that worked, uh, last, last Saturday, uh, to do the back to school bash, several of our staff were there and we, uh, had that opportunity to share with our community. Uh, I did not hear how many, um, satchels or bags or whatever, uh, school supplies were prepared, but I know, uh, I've attended, uh, all of those except this year, which conflicted with our TSBA, uh, meeting. Uh, tho- those are very well attended and families, um, look forward to receiving those school supplies, so I know that's happening. Uh, all of our schools have had open houses as of now, so we're excited about that. School will start on Tuesday. Uh, we're, we're excited about that. I would remind you, we've talked about the date for, uh, our planning session upcoming on the tenth. And so again, dinner will be with new administrators that evening at five and then, uh, we'll have our planning session at six. And I think I've talked to all of you, uh, to confirm your attendance at Fall District Meeting, uh, that is here in Dixon this year. Uh, we are hosting that, that will be at Creekwood High School. Um, we'll have more details about that, that is in, uh, mid to late September. And again, maybe.
Twenty fifth, Tuesday, I think.
That is twenty-fifth at Creekwood High School. And if you have not confirmed with me that you're going to be there, if you would, please make sure I can do it so we can get you registered. And again, we would hope since we are hosting, we can be a hundred percent that evening if possible. Uh, we'd like to thank all of our staff for the hard work that they've done. We mentioned summer school teachers, uh, who taught summer school. Uh, we've thought about, um, staff that have worked all summer getting ready to start school this coming week. And so there's been a lot of planning and, uh, preparation in for that, so there's a lot going on there. Uh, to have departmental notes from all supervisors and coordinators is coming around to you. And thank you board members, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Weeks. More comments? Report. Hearing none, uh, we have any communications, Dr. Weeks, by the way, outside?
No.
All right. We see any comments? Mr. Mann?
We started my phone, I was very uncomfortable, but I did want to take the Glock product and me and Laura Ross and I'll be there to get that going. We had a great turnout tonight, it's super fun, it's available. Like it started at five, I'm watching the show, but it was a good turnout. And the other thing, I'm so happy to give away all back to school bash. We had one hundred and eleven back on school members, school staff in. And the number of door prizes that the businesses, they're like, they're like, it's just like, like in a quick interview, we can read door prizes, we can sing the names. And that was a very good place, yes, just seeing the people, you know, we sit in the car, we have a good feeling, we're not just partying today, it's been good. I know my lady, you know, and several of the doctors, and so I appreciate the guys, and they're amazing, what can I, you know, our favorite thing you can do is that was, we can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. All members, any comments or questions?
All right.
All right, comments for board members, Mr. Parker?
I sure wish everybody all the luck in the world as they get started back to school from the bottom to the top. I'm sure it's hectic, so good luck to all y'all. Uh, do want to just comment on dress code issue that we had. And I just want to say, I hope that it didn't come off wrong. I think the board stood behind the policy that the board put in place. And that anytime any administration wants to fix, add, correct or change a discipline policy that would take into it, I would be in support of that. So good luck to everybody on getting back to school. Thank y'all for y'all's hard work in summer school, I'm sure that was a pain and it was a lot of work, I'm absolutely sure of it. Thank you and thank you for the transportation and the maintenance and everybody that put in work over the summer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Underwood?
No, I don't have any comments, I just appreciate, uh, everyone's hard work and the, uh, the, uh, honor that I have to be working with such a great team of leaders.
Chairman?
I know teachers are facing more and more difficult things and I just applaud their efforts and, and, and we just got to think about ways of, of being able to keep things uh, from going to work on it.
Mr. Trailer?
I played my feet pretty much tonight, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, it's, it's broken.
I want to thank the people for the summer camp. I had a little boy come up to me who's. I had a little boy come up to me who's going to sixth grade. And he was very upset that he was not going to get to go back to white bluff camp because it was so much more fun than staying at home. So I think the kids, um, lar- it was a good learning experience for them. Most of them may not even realize they were learning. They were just having fun. Um, and I've had several parent, parents say their kids improved on those test scores and they never thought those kids would improve. So y'all did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here tonight. And again, just reiterate, thanks for all the work in the summer. Hope everybody has a great start to the new school year. Thank you. Good journey.